And appointments committee meeting to order, it is five thirty eight. All committee members are present on consisting myself, Andre Baumgardner, Counselor David McBride, and Counselor Scott Westervelt. Calendar and communications, do any committee members have any communications or reports?
Counselor McBride does not.
I do not.
Alright, and I I have done. Now on to approval of the minutes, I will make a motion to approve the April nineteenth committee meeting minutes.
McBride will second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, extension, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Now on to new business, we have a very light agenda this evening, so I expect things to go pretty quickly. We have two appointments for first ABCs in our here in the town. Of note, we have the a vacancy or first first ever appointment for an ex officio member of the town council, ex officio non voting member of the town council to the citizens and police committee. We have two applicants for the position, both town counselors, counselors, Melinda Cassieri and Counselor Portia Borderland. I believe we have Counselor Cassieri here as well as we do have Council Board on she's in the attendees, I mean, as well as Council Board along. We can start with Counselor Cassieri, if that's alright, do you want to start first? Excellent.
That's fine.
Alright, so we will welcome Counselor Cassieri for an interview. We've done this before with committee members, the clerk invites folks to to our committee for an interview, and so we have Counselor Cassieri joining us, thank you for taking the time to be here this evening, and we understand you are interested in being the ex officio non voting member to the citizens and police committee, and feel free to share why you would like to do do as such.
Great, thank you very much for having me tonight. Super surprising, but I prepared a little something, it's a little synopsis of my resume and I hope it's okay to read it.
Yes.
Thank you Chair. So, I think I have three different categories of qualifications that give me a really unique experience to bring to the group. The first is my educational experience, I have a bachelor's of science degree in criminal justice with a concentration in investigative services from the University of New Haven, which has one of the best criminal justice forensic science programs in the country. I have a minor in English and two certificates in law enforcement, science and victim services. While I was attending school full time, I was a part time security officer and also a volunteer firefighter and earned my firefighter one certification. So I have many different areas of public safety experience. And just a few months after graduating with my bachelor's, I was hired as a police officer. And so I essentially went right back into schooling at the Connecticut Posty Academy, which stands for Police Officers Standards and Training Council. Where I was trained to become a police officer, and that's where you learn basically anything that you can think of that a police officer would need to know to investigate an accident, penal codes, case law, interview and interrogation, domestic violence firearms training, defensive tactics, criminal procedure, crisis intervention, and obviously a lot more. When I graduated, I was sent back to my department and continued my education and field training, and I became a certified officer. And then after you become an officer, your education does not stop. I had several trainings, including the forty hour crisis intervention training, a DUI class and a class on youth and the juvenile justice system, as well as the mandated recertification classes that are required every few years, as well as other various trainings. Which leads me to my next category, which is my experience as a police officer. I had four years of preparation in college. I took all of the cool classes, fingerprinting, crime scene investigation, a college version of interview and interrogation, forensic science victimology. And then I essentially went straight into the police academy for more training. But nothing, no class, no seminar, no Henry Lee presentation, no scenarios that we went over in the academy could have prepared me for the things that I would see, experienced, have to deescalate any crisis and the trauma that I would see very quickly once I put on the badge and the uniform and was sent out to police the city. I worked in two very busy diverse cities, it's a whole different experience to apply case law when you are actually in action and have to determine, do I have reasonable suspicion or do I have probable cause? It's a completely different experience when you respond to a domestic violence call, which you're told in the academy is one of the most dangerous calls to respond to. And the person opens the door and attempts to stab you with a pair of scissors, or you were responding to a domestic violence call with a machete, or you were almost stabbed with a kitchen knife, or you were thrown from a porch, or you have to catch a baby that a mother in crisis is trying to throw from the porch. These are just a small sample of things that I responded to. No class can prepare you for the chaos, the trauma and situations you will face until you walk in the shoes of an officer. I saw a lot, I responded to a lot, and I deescalated a lot. I also identify as a female, and unfortunately, the female police officer experience can be considered unique in itself. However, this brings me to my last and final qualification, I have now had time removed from law enforcement. And because I have since resigned since having my kids, I have had time to process and an opportunity to heal from some of the trauma and things that I've seen. I've had therapy and time to process my years in law enforcement. Removal from something can give us new perspective, I've become a mother, and that certainly gives me new perspective, I've become an elected official, which gives me many new perspectives. And I've had time to educate myself on things that I wasn't aware of back then, such as my privilege and the systemic bias that is entwined with the current criminal justice system. I have found that my process years in law enforcement makes me an excellent candidate to explain it very well. I was a member of the civilian oversight research committee on the RTM and contributed my experience to that document. I brought up issues that no other member had brought up during conversations because they weren't aware of them, such as we needed to really think about deploying a type of oversight committee in the town because of the education and training that would be required. I've had conversations with many other elected officials, our colleagues, about the example of a pat down versus a search. Without understanding Fourth Amendment search and seizure laws, how is a body of untrained individuals supposed to know how to identify the difference between the two? Also, I brought up the issue of re-traumatizing and revictimizing victims of a crime. There are people in the court committee who are very eager to implement some type of oversight committee, which is understandable, but they weren't thinking of the impact of having untrained members of a board interviewing a victim without any training. Imagine having had a terrible experience that you feel you need to make a complaint about, and then having to I'm sorry, and then you learn that you will be required to face a panel of untrained members of the community you live in, when you don't want anyone to know your trauma. This could actually deter people from making a complaint, which is the opposite of what we intended to do. To learn more about unintended consequences of subjecting victims to know to trauma over and over again, I highly recommend the book Know My Name by Chanel Miller, she was the Stanford sexual assault survivor who recently just identified herself. She also spoke about the lack of education and guidance about the procedures of her court case. This brings up another important topic of procedural justice, which we can educate members of our community about, that's the hows and whys for people who enter the system. Not just as an offender, but as a victim or a witness. And I was able to write a whole referral for an addiction specialist because of my time working with the mobile outreach program and my familiarity with addiction through my work. So these are just a couple of examples of how I have brought my training and experience to educating members of our town and law enforcement procedures and protocols. Ultimately, I think that this is what the group was intended for, to bridge the gap between community and police. I think it is important to have a group that is welcoming, encouraging, educational and non intimidating. These are very important conversations and members of our community should be heard, and it should be a safe space for people to talk openly. I do agree with other counselors that we should attempt to recruit more minority members of our community to be a part of this group. I hope that if there does end up being a vacancy, that we do attempt to fill the seat with a person of color or a strong advocate for change. However, it is our role as town counselors to find and recruit members for ABCs. We don't put the burden on recruitment on committee members, we're already volunteering their time to serve. I think the important thing to focus on is to make sure that our voting members of this group have a voice, a vote and a seat at the table. My job as the ex officio member of the council is to help, assist, educate and listen, and then be able to effectively and efficiently communicate these conversations back to the council, which I demonstrated after the first meeting. Town counselors already have a seat at the table, and we should be utilizing our positions to ensure others do too. Our role is to listen to the needs of our community, thank you.
Thank you, do counselors have any questions?
Chair, I have some questions, but I'm gonna, I prefer to bounce them back, back and forth to be you know, fully transparent and not ask Counselor Cassieri all them now and then Counselor Borderland after.
Okay, that's that's a reasonable request. Counselor Westerwell, do you have any questions?
Actually, I agree with David, I think we should hear both from both of them, both of the candidates, and then we can bounce off questions. I'm trying to process everything that was just said, so I would like to hear from Counselor Borderland before we move on.
Excellent, yes, I'll withhold my questions as well until we hear from from Counselor Borderland. Thank you Counselor Cassieri for your remarks, Counselor Borderland, are you online?
Yes, I am, can you guys hear me from, I'm having to use my phone because my computer isn't currently being upgraded, it's in a cycle, so I do apologize. Okay, first off, I just want to thank Counselor Cassieri for her remarks and her service to the community that she serves. My stance in coming into this again is I'm a longtime Broughton resident, Fitch High School graduate. I have lived and been entrenched into the demographics in this community from peers at the high school to raising two minority students in the town of Broughton, where I've heard the concerns and the cries for more accountability, transparency and minority representation. My personal background, I too was a criminal justice major, I did not finish with a bachelor's degree, but attended three years in criminal justice, where I served as a probation assistant as my internship for a couple of years, which I thoroughly enjoyed, where I got a chance to listen and hear what it means for reintegration back in the community when a person is an offender and the burden and responsibility and the concerns that they have about, as it's stated here, re-traumatizing, some folks have post traumatic stress from some type of wrongdoing that maybe has happened, that they've served their time and that reintegration is very, very important. I also have served on the, as a unified swimming and track coach on the Special Olympics. I touch upon this because I think it's very important to understand that 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 community, people who identify as having a learning disability or a special needs of, sometimes are having higher rates of incidents with law enforcement, not for anything necessarily wrong, but them just trying to adapt to who they are. And so understanding that and having to be a part of that community when the de-escalation could not occur and law enforcement was involved. I also have worked on the rape crisis line as a volunteer, helping young women and actually and men, later in years, it opened up even broader. And it was a free volunteer job where you pick hours and you man the lines and direct the calls to 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 encourage women to report incidents, instances where they felt and knew that they were being raped, but you know, we're having trouble getting to that point of commitment to understand what the process was. Very eye opening, very rewarding for me as a young female to be able to do such, but a very important part of 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 my own experiences. Currently, I serve on the knowing community support services as a board member where we we serve on oh god, is it about roughly four homes between Ledgerd, Knowing, Grotten, and these homes work with adults with disabilities, homeless youth between the age of twenty eighteen to twenty one, as well as young women and men that are committed to the state of Connecticut and maybe have not found foster homes and are, you know, needing to live in an assisted program until they can find such. Some of these facilities also have, you know, behavior issues where they maybe had some law enforcement juvenile justice encounters, you know, in the past. Let it be delinquents or, you know, school abadements or juvenile delinquencies on things, the list goes on, domestics. I currently work in the medical field and I am a full time, you know, a full time work on the Broughton Navy Base at their medical facility, as well as a mother of a son who's currently active duty. I have a lot of family members that are law enforcement, as well as my son who lives in the town of Broughton and attends Fitch and is, you know, also here. I think what I bring is something that you can't necessarily always put on a resume. It's just life experience of knowing the demographics and the pockets in this community that feel comfortable reaching out to me and saying, hey Portia, this is how I feel and feeling that close connection. As a person on the Grotton Town Council who strongly has advocated since I got involved over four years ago for more minority recruit, not only in our schools, but on our, on our, all of our boards and commissions because it's important for our our committees to reflect the community that it serves. And that is another unique perspective that I can bring as a woman, but also as a multiracial woman, a minority, and I also think it's important to to be fair that, you know, I have had friends and close other people that have felt they didn't do anything wrong, there was never any bad implication implication from police departments, but they felt kind of maybe they were being profiled or singled out in a crowd for being in a wrong place just by walking at night because someone said they looked suspicious, and naturally a cop has to respond to that situation. And in fact, it was someone just going out for a late night walk. I'm excited to be a part of this committee. I was really excited when it came forward for the RTM that Sima had appointed this along with Ian Thomas, you know, kind of pushing the initiative and getting it going at a time when most many people weren't really interested in it happening. And when it finally happened, a great group came along as Cassieri, Counselor Cassieri served on. I do think that, you know, this committee, as some have stated, you know, came out of, you know, the whole George Floyd and the state looked at different ways to look at a police accountability. And the current tapestry of the group that is on, it does not really reflect the community in which this committee was supposed to be kind of embracing, reflecting and kind of, you know, being a voice for. And that's something I think that I I could do. With that, I think it's important to have a tapestry of folks from all walks of life. I do encourage though that we don't do not want it to be so I don't want to say militaristic in the sense, because I know working on the base when they had extra outreach programs for active duty members, they tried to make it more civilian like and not so structured like military like their job. And I think the same for this, I look at this committee as being more of an organic process. Obviously, law enforcement would be involved in the social worker, but we don't want to be more law enforcement than we are civilians who are everyday folks that live in our town that bring a different feed. If in fact, there was somebody who's reintegrated back into the community, you know, they need to feel that they can people understand what they go to and what they feels like, and and I think that's hard for some to to be able to represent, but I do think that the community should be wrapped around embracing all the different needs of our community. I'm excited for it, I think, you know, more recruitment for this committee should happen, and and I look forward to seeing where it goes. I think I'm a great asset as a person who's been involved in the community for a while, elected for a while, and has deserved, has received a lot of respect from constituents who feel trusted that they can speak to me. And I look forward to hearing from you guys and answering any further questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you Counselor Borderland for your remarks, any questions from committee members?
This Counselor, I have a few questions. And I'll just go through them one at a time, and and please be brave, you're both very, you know, highly intellectual, we can, we don't need to go on for hours on these, but just we can give some quick explanations, I would appreciate your thoughts on these. I had four questions, however, the first one was really just to tell me about your experience in police related matters, and you both touched upon your experience there, so I don't think there's a need to go through there. Number two, I'll I'll start with Counselor Cassieri. Do you believe the Grotton Town Police Budget is sufficient? And do you believe we had to, we should have a need to increase or decrease employees within the department? Or as well as police vehicles?
So, to answer your first part, I do not think it's sufficient. The council before us kind of made a proclamation that they wanted to put three social workers, one for every shift. And that is a goal that I would like to see reached as we are transitioning into a more social work friendly department. I'm sorry, what was the other part of your question?
Do you think the police department has the necessary resources in in capital such as police vehicles? And and the number of employees, I guess you covered the number of employees.
Number of employees, we we obviously are having a hiring issue right now with seven vacancies, so that's just kind of the nature of the game right now, I would love to get back up to where they were. And police vehicles, I think they just need to be replaced as needed. So if we are at an adequate amount of vehicles, then we're good.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Borderland, similar, same question for you, if you wouldn't mind answering.
Sure.
What is the money's capital?
As far as the personnel, I do think, you know, my hopes for the personnel, I think they're definitely more outside resources and social workers as as well as more community policing, so that's something when they're short, you see less of in as an in as a whole, but I definitely I do think, yes, there could be more staffing, but they need to be strategically placed in the right sector of the police department, more in the human service sector that could be properly funded to not only support the police officers, but to kind of help the community. As far as the vehicles and needing more, I do think that they need to be replaced, you need reliable vehicles, and they do take a heavy hitting. But I do not think that we should go above more than obviously what is needed. If something is broken, needs to be replaced or upgraded, obviously, you know, one should do such. I I, you know, I do think that that is an important part, so.
And and the budget, do you think that's sufficient, I guess you covered it, some of it with the employee discussion.
So the budget, so I mean, I think the community did speak, you know, or some people spoke that the 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 number had gone up drastically and a lot had said from, you know, having this new pressure from the state to have certain things in place also played a part. I, I think when looking at the budget, we have to look at all departments in some way equally and making sure. I don't think that it's necessarily that all those items cannot be funded, but sometimes some things may be able to be spread out, maybe some more grants. But, you know, it's like the locker room, for example, that was something that needed to replace a long time ago, absolutely needed to be funded. You know, but I do think there there always is a way to look for some ways to maybe hold off on certain projects and and fund. When I got on the council, it was the radios and I was in huge support of putting in the new tab, the new radio system as well as, you know, upgrading the body cams and things like that. So I think things go in phases, and I think that the budget should reflect based on the need at the time, so.
Thank you, it's ironic you mentioned the body cameras, my my third question was going to be, and I'll lead with you Portia on this one. Can you provide, and and these aren't directly related to the committee, but I think it gives me a feeling for both of your understanding of some of the, some of the items that are being discussed.
Sure.
Can you give me your your thoughts and opinions on police body cameras?
Absolutely necessary, long overdue. I think the, you know, everyone deserves a fair witness, including the cops and the you know, the person who's being pursued or, you know, just in general. I think it provides safety not only for the officers, but also for the constituents in the community. I know to date that some towns do not have them yet, and I think part of this whole movement of having some form of extra set of tools and some people call oversight, cameras are the answer for that.
Thank you, Counselor Cassieri, same question, thoughts and opinions on body cameras?
Sure, I am absolutely in favor of body cameras, I wish I had worn body cameras when I was an officer, unfortunately, it wasn't around then. I'm super happy that we had a, we have a town that was leaders in that, that we were one of the first in the area to have it, and it's a public want, so I'm a hundred percent supportive.
Okay, thank you both, last question, I'll I'll start with you Counselor Cassieri. And this is kind of a three or four part one, so just really maybe, I don't know, yes or no, yes or whatever you want, but do you believe the citizens and police committee should have A, the ability to overtime supervise police departments? B, review and investigate reports and case findings and police officers? C, issue subpoenas for personnel and paperwork? And I'm sorry, that was just, there was just C, so A, the ability to overtime, I apologize, I have contact problems, I'm having trouble reading, ability to oversee overtime to supervise police departments similar to a police commission, B, review and investigate reports and case findings and police officers, and C, issue subpoenas for personal paper, personal paperwork.
Can we just take it one at a time, can you just tell me A?
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry.
A was the ability overtime to supervise police departments similar to a police commission.
No, I do not believe this body should be able to do that. This was discussed ad nauseam in the court and also through the council, and this was the method that we came up with that I think is an excellent stepping stone and a good start and a good way of bridging that gap between community and officers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
B is to review and investigative reports and case findings of police officers.
So as I touched upon in my little synopsis there, I do not believe that untrained individuals, community members should have that ability to review and investigate findings from an investigation or reports. It is such a nuanced and convoluted expertise, and it would take significant training and education for a citizen to be able to do those things effectively and efficiently.
Thank you, and C, to issue subpoenas for personnel and paperwork.
Same answer.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your your thoughts, Counselor Borderland, similar questions for you. A was the ability overtime to supervise police department similar to a police commission.
I mean, I think under the structure that we created, looking at the court report, again, it was not, the the things that went forward were a consensus that everyone could agree on to move forward, and so I think that's the unique part of all of that, and the the great opportunities they had to work together. So their recommendation was not for that, and so I don't think under this structure that was agreed upon as a consensus in that report to move forward, it has the teeth to do such, so no, I at this time, I do not believe it does.
Okay, thank you, B was to review investigative. Okay, thank you. Uh, B was to review investigative reports and case findings of police officers.
I mean, I think, um, you know, we're not, uh, crime, I'm definitely not certified as a detective, um, in any stretch of the imagination. Um, so I do not feel that, you know, I feel this should be handled in-house. Um, with the town manager handling it, but then once findings come out at the end, there might be somewhere where there might be like. Um, some collaboration or some discussions, but no, definitely not, uh, the investigative body.
Great, thank you. And the third piece was to issue subpoenas for personnel and paperwork.
I mean, as far as that goes, again, that's what we hire our town manager to do. Um, and the hopes is that that process is being handled, uh, internally in such a way. Um, but I do believe that the committee could be a support to the town manager if he chose to use it or ask questions. As people stated their experiences or thought process. I mean, there's a lot of ways that this group, group can work collaboratively. Where it can be anonymous and it could be, I'm dealing with the situation and I'm wondering what the community's input is on certain things. Um, and I think that's having the resource available, but I, uh, the other way, I don't think, again, it's got the power in the structure that was presented.
Okay, thank you both for your answer. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Uh, Chair Baumgartner, I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McBride. Um, Council Westervelt, any questions?
Um, I'm, uh, I think I want to just listen in a little further. Um, there's a lot of good information and I can see both of, both of these standards are extremely strong. Um, and they both bring different, different aspects to this, um, some of the same as well. So I'm just trying to, trying to wrap my head around everything that's been said. So if you have questions with you, wouldn't ahead of me, I would appreciate it.
All right. Yes, um, I, I do have a few questions. Um, my first question is, uh, you know, I, I think in, in the interest of. Equity and sharing, um, sharing workloads, working collaboratively. You know, all of us serve in, in addition to our council duties, obviously, and all volunteer gig. Um, uh, but it almost functions like a part-time job. We still make time to serve on personnel appointment committees and. Uh, you know, school, school, um, you know, school reuse committees and. Um, you know, but it's no shortage of other, of the committees. And so, uh, my question is just in terms of your workload, can either, both of you share what, um, committees you either serve on? Or liaise to as part of your council duties? Um, and, uh, eh, uh, any, anyone can take that question first.
Would you like me to go first, Council Boarder?
Sure, you can go.
Thank you. Uh, I currently serve on public safety and the RTM Town Council Board of Ed, uh, liaison group.
Council Bill.
Uh, yes, I, um, was interested in public safety, um, but I got put on, uh. Temporary rules. Um, I served on the long-term recovery committee. Um, which is kind of sporadic now that we Alex started allocating all the different ways the money's going to be going. I was temporarily for the short time on, um, short-term rentals, which is wrapped up. So that has ended. I served some time on the athletics task force. Uh, as well for a short time on the No Ink, uh, GLP Bridge. Um, I am currently on the, oh God, I'm thinking, I'm blinking on the name with, uh. McBride and Council McBride and, uh, Westrevelt that just started, uh.
Property reuse.
Property reuse. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, property reuse. Um, and then out in the community, I am a board member for community, um, community support services, knowing community support services. Um, as well as, um, other things, um, throughout, uh, the rotten public school. Um, volunteering for marching band events and things like that. So I, I stay pretty busy.
Excellent. Um, and, um, do you? Um, have either of you, obviously, uh, Council, Council Casari, you mentioned that you attended the, um. The previous meeting, um, they believe they've held one meeting so far.
Yes.
Um, you, you had made the comment that, um, you see this committee as sort of a next best step. Um, where, where do you, what would you like to see the committee tackle, um, in terms of their agenda? And, uh, that, that question's also for Council Boarder.
I think we should let the committee figure out where they want to go with it. Um, the first meeting was very, very brief. It was basically, um, introductory. However, there was this really, um, organic moment, if you want to call it, which was, um. That's kind of where I want to see it go. Um, Chair Dela Cruz brought up the issue of homelessness in our community. And there was this really, um, great moment where, you know, the town manager kind of threw out. Um, you know, that we have the homeless hospitality center. However, you know, Chair Dela Cruz was kind enough to recognize me since I'm not, you know, in the group yet. Um, and we had this really nice conversation of, I threw out, well. You can do wellbeing checks on individuals if you're concerned for, it's not just about deferring to the homeless hospitality center. And the chief stepped in and we just had this really nice organic conversation. And so that's what I would like to see of the committee, for it to be educational. And for committee members, for voting members to decide what they want to see from the group. I hope that answered your question. Oh, you're moved.
Yes, uh.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Um, Ca- Council Boarder.
Thank you. Uh, one other thing I forgot to, uh, and add to my thing was, um, I was also part of the Health Improvement Collaborative, which is also called HIC. Through alleged, uh, Ledge Light Health District, which looks at social inequalities and injustice in minorities. From, um, access to medical care, to police reforms, to, um, recidivism rates and things like that. So that's another thing I wanted to add. Um, so these are the things I, I, I hope to bring in some experts like that who have actually done the data. Right? We got to bring in the ledge light health district who's been working with, um, the community where they purposely took. Minor, minorities and different folks from different access, uh, points in the town and work data to see the homelessness. The access to good food and shelter, why the crime rates in certain areas. Those are my hopes. And then to have an open dialogue where, um, we allow, uh, for folks to come in. That maybe want to, um, you know. Mend the relationship maybe that they had in the community where at eighteen, they got in trouble, trouble for a minor offense. And it's kind of something that's been on their record. And now at thirty, you know, they've had this bad image or this bad feel. Um, with their first encounter with law enforcement. And so my hopes is to bridge those gaps. And give everybody a second chance and a welcoming platform. We also have to think of some, um, children in our community that become adolescents that not, no fault of their own. Maybe have had, um, a bad police encounter or law enforcement encounter because they seen a loved one like a father or a mother. Get taken down in a house because they became, they had mental illness and they had to be. And now they view law enforcement in a way, but in fact, they were doing their job. And so what I hope to do is to bring in those people, you know, those, um, types of folks back in and say, come meet Mr. Officer. You know, this person and hey, you know, there's a friendly face here for that. So my hope is as an engaged committee member, because not all non-voting members, you, 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 everyone brings a piece or something that they can share. And, um, that's something I can do is connect outside sources like the, um, Health Improvement Collaborative, uh, efforts. And, you know, see what types of data they're bringing and, uh, you know, maybe present that to the group. Because I think it's important to bring that data to educate, so we can have it for discussion, to look at recidivism rates and ways that we. And brought in can be more sensitive to the population that we're serving. Thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you for those questions, uh, for those responses. Um, Council Westervelt, do you have your, any questions?
Um, actually, yeah, at this moment, I really don't have any questions. The only thing I have, uh, son of comments, um. The fact that both, um, Council Boarder and Councilor Casari are, I think. Qualified for this position and given their different strengths. Um, obviously, uh, Councilor Casari with her law enforcement background. Um, she can probably wade through a lot of the issues that may come up. But then Councilor Boarder also with her, um, with her background in the community. Um, having been here basically her whole life, um, and understanding. A lot of the different, um, avenues that are available, like as she was just saying for the recid- recidivism. I hate that word. It's difficult to say. Um, things like that, I think are very important. And I think that's something that someone will be able to address through this. So I really don't have any, any questions. I think of both highly qualified. I just would need to think about this. So that, you know, I could make sure we were putting a best foot forward and the best candidate forward.
Thank you. Um, Ca- Council McBride, do you have any follow-up questions?
I do not, but I, I would concur with Council Rest of all that they're both extremely qualified in different areas, uh, and it's unfortunate we couldn't have. Uh, co-chairs or, you know, whatever is to both be involved because they both would bring a lot of value to this committee.
Well, I think here and I.
Can we not have co?
Well, he, here, here in lies the problem and I, I, you know, we have deliberated on this committee for, uh, quite some time. Um, a, a lot longer than obviously the committee has had the time to deliberate themselves. Uh, they have held just one meeting by virtue of their, uh, recent appointment in the last couple, um, months. Um, and then also, you know, just in terms of how, um, we have appointed to this, uh, committee. Kind of breaking from, um, the precedent of, of, you know, putting forward as the slate. Endorsed by the Personnel and Appointments Committee. Um, and so I'll, I'll withhold comments on that. Because I, I don't think it is beneficial or, or helpful to, uh, bring up the past. I, you know, especially with this committee, this is a forward-thinking committee, a committee thinking about the future. A committee thinking about how we can best collaborate as citizens with our police force. And that's so critical, especially at this time when, uh, no matter who you talk to, on which side of the spectrum. I think everyone can acknowledge that conversations have broken down and the community discourse has deteriorated over the last few years. And I think committees such as this can provide a platform, uh, to mend those fences as, um, both, both candidates shared, uh, this evening. And so in, in some ways, I'm kind of reluctant to even, uh, advance. Really anyone right now in large part because I still fundamentally do not believe that this committee. Um, the, the will, does reflect, um, the. And, you know, I want to use my words carefully here, but, uh, the committee does not reflect. A committee with a broad spectrum of viewpoints to have an honest and transparent discourse. I would fundamentally agree with the assertion that if you can have both Council Casari and Council Partalon in a room. To discuss a matter like this, I think you can move forward in a positive direction. And that, that is kind of what in my eye, how I've been, I would envision this committee bringing together stakeholders. Not just having one perspective or one point of view or one person that has the support of certain committee members or another person. Then it has the support of certain personnel and, and appointments committee members. Um, and so my ask is, you know, if we can find that consensus, it is not difficult at all. For our town council to act and say, hey, you know what? We can expand membership here. We can expand the upper number of seats so that we can have more people involved. And as I mentioned before, it is a really good problem to have so many applications for a committee and not enough positions to fill them. And that is what happened with our committee. And unfortunately, there were a lot of members who were not, um, you know. Who, who didn't, did not get, uh, chosen. And that's okay. You know, that's a part of the process. But I think moving forward, I, I fundamentally do believe we really should not just look at, but act on expanding membership. Um, so we don't have to vote against people serving on a, a committee. I, I think it's, uh, a, a bit ridiculous, quite frankly. Especially when we do have two, as it was mentioned, two highly qualified candidates that can really contribute a lot to the discussion. Um, so I, I have had those discussions with the mayor in the past about expanding membership. Obviously, there is so much that our, uh, our council is working on right now. Um, but I, I do believe that if there is any form of consensus on that, um, you know, I. Uh, I, I would like to then, um, move forward, all the applications that, you know, for, for this, uh, position. You know, for our two counselors that have applied, because I do believe both of them should have a role in this. If we really ha- want to have a, a, a frank discussion about, uh, policing matters in Grotton. Um, so, uh, counselors, uh, committee members, do you, do you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, the only thought I would have is, you know, I'm not sure how that would work. It, it, ultimately the council can make that decision, obviously. I don't know what the rest of their thoughts are, but I'm, I'm, I'm available. Um, you know, my thoughts are. Uh, if the council desires to do that, then the council desires to do that. So I'm flexible based on what the council, council wants to do.
Uh, Council Westervelt?
Yes, um, yeah, actually, I, I agree with you both on that. Um, and like I said, both candidates bring a unique perspective to this. And I would hate to see either perspective, um, you know, cancel out because they, because we only had room for one. I don't think, I think that would be a disservice to the committee, um, because I think the committee can do good. Um, I think it can do a lot of good and I think both candidates really bring stuff to the table that will. That will enhance the committee. So I, I would love to see if we could expand it and have two of one there. I think that would be awesome.
And, and one, one final comment on that, you know, what, what I would hate to see on either side is we advance a, a, a member out of this committee. To our town council and then on the floor, there's a motion to nominate someone else. And then, uh, what started off as a pretty collegial meeting ends up turning into mush. And I, I would really like to avoid that. I, I think as a council, you know, we have amazing members and we have the capacity to work together and get things done. So I really don't want to see that. Um, but with that said, if there is a consensus or recognition that, you know, we believe both members. Have a lot to offer, then I would, um, respectfully ask the committee to, um. To withhold appointment of this until we already have our interviews now. We can't, we've, we've talked as a group. Um, and we'll make a referral to expand the membership of our, uh, non-voted member, uh, to ex officio non-mem. Voted member for the council from one to two. And if there needs to be any other adjustments in terms of membership, we can review it. Um, but I, I believe in, just in terms of our committee membership. Um, I'm, I'm, I think what we could do is almost make a, we can make a motion to appeal to the council. That we would like to see two members appointed, uh, to the, uh, commission. Um, would do, uh, committee members be receptive of that?
Yes, Council McBride.
All right, so.
I would.
Go ahead, Council Westervelt.
Um, I would be receptive to that. And, um, you know, just a, a couple of minutes ago, I think at this point, and I don't, I don't know how you can actually do it. I think, I think we, we close it where we're at with the two who have applied. They've obviously shown the interest. Um, I wouldn't, I would not be welcome to, you know, anybody else jumping in. No disrespect to anyone at all, but we've gone this far. We've met with these two candidates. Um, and I think that their broad spectrum of experience and knowledge is what we're looking for. And I don't think we need to look any further, but, and I would very much, uh, um, agree with, uh, putting in a motion. To expand the committee.
All right, um, Ca- Council Boarder, you, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, is it okay if I said, could say something really quick?
Yes, of course.
I just was gonna say.
And same, same goes for Council Casari.
I was just gonna say, I would be honored to work with Councilors Casari. I, I think that's a great idea. I think that she also does bring a different perspective that I don't. And I think that there's some things that I could bring that I could maybe, you know, bounce off of her and vice versa. And also, um, as we know, we're all busy on commissions and meetings. We could work together to fulfill that. Um, you know, obviously if we both attend, but at least, um, there always would be hopefully someone in attendance. And, um, it would be a great partnership that I'd be, be, be welcome and, uh, look forward to the opportunity. Thank you.
Uh, Council Casari?
Thank you. I just want to thank you all. I, amazing questions to ask us and, um. I, I support bringing this to the council and ultimately seeing what the council wants to do. And thank you, Council Boarder, uh, for your interview and just the civil discourse in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I think if that's any indication of what, you know, if you both. Thank you. And I I think if that's any indication of what, you know, if you both serve on this committee, you know, just your decorum and and respect and civility towards one another. I know you both want to serve on this committee. And they're very passionate about these issues. And so I I think it is unfair of me to ask our committee members to make a very difficult choice, choosing between both of you, especially at this stage of the game where we are with council business. I think we need to move in a direction of working together and collaborating. And both of you have demonstrated this evening that your your willingness and capacity to do so. And I'm certainly appreciative of that. And it is it is noted and we'll certainly share that with with the mayor. So we can get this on an agenda. So with that said, I will make a motion to urge our council, town, the town council to expand membership to or expand the ex officio non voting member membership from the town council from one member to two members.
Second, Westerville.
All right, moved by Bumgarner, seconded by Westerville and I think thirded by McBride. We can't do that. So moved seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously three zero zero. I would note, as Counselor Casiri mentioned, she attended the the committee meeting as well. I would implore you both to to do so in lieu, you know, whether you're officially confirmed before then anyway. But I I very much appreciate your candor, your willingness to share your perspectives, your life perspectives. I've learned a lot about both of you tonight and you know, really want to thank you, Counselor Casiri, for your service as a police officer. And, you know, your service to our our council and the same to to Counselor Boarderlin and your many capacities in civic life and private life as well. And you both are are great counselors and will do a lot of great work in our community. And I think you, the community would be well served by you both on on this new committee. So with that, thank you again for your time. And if nothing else, I think we can move on to other business. All right. Thank you, Counselor Casiri and Counselor Boarderlin. You're welcome to stay or or leave. I know you both have a lot of things going on too. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I, we do have one more item on the agenda and for appointment to the apologize, just pulled up real quick. One moment, apologize. Okay. This is for the Community Development Advisory Committee with the term expiring on two seven twenty twenty two. In the agenda, you'll see the memo prepared by Town Clerk Betty McCausier. And we brought this up at our last meeting, just about the sixty day hold on applications that our committee has honored. I I would note that throughout the last six months that this committee has been this committee has worked or has approved applications. We have honored that rule and have been aggressively held to that standard by other counselors and kind of outside parties and our concerned citizens. And I I do struggle breaking from that precedent when we've held firm on it. Again, the sixty day hold is after a a member applies to the applies to serve on a board or commission. We have to hold or we hold that application for sixty days. So other folks can apply. And obviously, you know, that is something that could should be reviewed by our committee moving forward because I I think in reality, it may slow down appointments, in my opinion, and prevents members or could prevent proper membership on commissions, which could become a problem if they can't commissions do not have a quorum and cannot conduct town business. And I would never want to prevent that. But with that said, oftentimes what has happened is we have received applications. Perhaps a concerned citizen would reach out and say, whoa, we don't believe this person should be appointed. And then they've kind of reinforced that rule where they said, oh, you have to hold their applications for sixty days. And then within that sixty eight day window, usually between the thirtieth or sixty day, you end up seeing another applicant for that same border commission when no one applied for that board for the last five, you know, or 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 last one or one and a half or two years. And so and that's when I think in my eye would have supposed to be really a non biased, non partisan committee. And as I mentioned, Counselor Westerville is a Republican. I'm a Democrat. Counselor McBride is a Democrat. But McBride and I are are still different Democrats. And so I think in in some ways, we represent a a cross section of of our council. And then, but we've operated in a bipartisan and non partisan fashion. We've typically, we have never voted on a nominee where it wasn't unanimous or or at least, you know, no member has voted no on an applicant, you know, and but you know, some folks have absained on things, but we have largely worked together in a bipartisan manner. And so I I want to continue doing that. And so it it says in the agenda that we can reappoint, or I'm sorry, we can appoint Russ Balding to the committee this evening. I see no reason why we cannot. However, if if we are this evening, you know, we we need to review this policy. And I know we got a lot going on. It's really not, I think, a in terms of priorities, the highest on the list, but it's still something that needs to be done if we, I think, want to have a more streamlined and efficient and fair appointments process. So does Counselor Westerville or Counselor McBride have any comment on that before we move on his application?
No, I I support the application. Maybe I misunderstood, but I had thought the the sixty day waiting period may have expired for him and therefore we could.
No, no, it's in effect until May twentieth, twenty twenty two.
But that was last week, though, right?
No, this oh, my goodness, you're right. My gosh, what am I doing?
It is hard.
I saw. Yes. Well, with that said, actually, and I I apologize, I wish someone told me to get off my soapbox.
No, no, it was good. It was good to hear that because this is a new committee to me. It's good to hear the background and how the process works. So that was very helpful.
But nonetheless, I I do believe we need to, obviously, that still impacted our previous meeting where, you know, we we had his application and we we probably could have acted, but we chose not to. And now that we have honored, I I would be inclined to move his application forward. We received positive comment from the chair of the of the personnel and I'm sorry, the Community Development Advisory Committee regarding this application. And so I I I can move that, you know, we appoint them as an as an alternate to the Community Development Advisory Commission.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
This is this is Russ Balding?
Yes.
Can I just say one thing? I just want to clarify one thing.
Yes.
So the application in front of us, and I think it's probably just not a typo because it's handwritten, but it says the date on his application was three twenty one twenty one. I think that probably should be three twenty one twenty two.
Oh, yes.
I don't think, we haven't had it for years. So I just wanted to make sure that that was it. That was the only thing I wanted to point out. But yeah, I'm I'm all in favor of moving forward with the nomination.
Yes, and I I would note that our original committee meeting was was to be held when we canceled it. It was going to be held on five seventeen. So it would have, the information I shared was based off of us having that the acting on the application, which would have been what, three or four days before the deadline? So but obviously, that is not the case. So I I apologize. I had these notes pre written out a couple of weeks ago. So so, yes, so he is he is in the in the clear. And moved by Bumgarner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion on the appointment of Russ Balding to the as an alternate to the Community Development Advisory Committee? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Congratulations, Mr. Spalding. With that, I see no other business on the agenda. Do counselors have anything, committee members have anything to say?
No, thank you. I'll sit here.
Excellent. All right. Good meeting. I will probably have another meeting in the next couple of weeks, depending on on what applications we need to act on. But I'll take two appointments or reappointments any day of the week. And hopefully, let's get these meetings. I know it was a long one time with the interviews, but let's get them down to twenty minutes. I'm sure we can all agree on that. All right. Well, everyone enjoy their evenings. I will call for a motion to adjourn at six forty.
Motion to adjourn, McBride?
Is there a second?
Second, Westerville.
All right. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of adjournment at six forty indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, take care.